I thought it was a mouse in the, and so did my cat.
Yeah.
My cat was staring at the walls thinking there was a mouse in it.
Yeah.
And finally, I stepped out on the enclosed porch, I looked and there he is, just hammering away at it.
Carpenter piece.
That was us.
Yep.
I'm sorry to interrupt. It's six o'clock. I'll call the meeting to order, please. Welcome to Board of Selectmen Meeting, Lee, New Hampshire. Let's start by going for public comment. If you have something you would like to say in public, raise your hand, I'll recognize you. You come up to the podium, you direct yourself towards the board, and you have three minutes. You have to state your name, you don't have to state your age, just have to state your name. State your name and address, please. Okay, anybody? I think everybody here is almost on the agenda for the most part. Okay, we'll move on. Luke Rodden.
Oh. Oh. Glad I got here on time.
Welcome.
Last time I thought you started at 6:00.
I'm sorry?
Oh, should it be?
No, you're right. The microphone's not on.
Oh, yeah. Luke Rodden, 14-hour late. I won't tell you my age. So, an update for the energy fair, not going very well. Well, a couple things. Barb was on vacation last month, Mary's on vacation this month. The Durham Energy Committee is on vacation this month. So, it's hard to get things together. Plus, it's with the, with the Delta variants, it's starting to look a little bit shaky. You know, everybody that would be helping is in their 70s and I don't know if it gets bad. I don't know, but they don't want to do any helping. So, and the weather has been kind of weird, a lot of rain, so who knows what's gonna happen. But I have another idea, and this is my idea. I need to pass it out to you. This does not require a lot of personnel staff.
Right.
As far as I can see.
Thanks.
Oh, that's a great idea. Should, do you want to explain it or?
Yeah, I actually, people know I'm on the Energy Committee and a lot of people have been telling me they're interested in solar and they're interested in EVs, and, but they don't know anything about it. And also, it occurred to me that we have a lot of people that have solar arrays here in Lee. I don't know how many people have electric vehicles, but I have a feeling there's a bunch. So, why not put these people together, people that are looking into it and people that have it, so that the people that have it can advise the people that are looking into it. I mean, a lot of people just don't know anything about it whatsoever, you know? They don't have a clue. So, I think this is, and I think all we really need is to buy some food, bring it over. Hopefully, they'll, people will show up. I'm thinking of maybe having one person who will be a runner, like start off with a certain amount of food, and if a lot of people show up, then they go to the market basket and get more food. Because I don't want a whole bunch of leftovers. So, that's my new idea. Oh, and also, I still like the idea of an energy fair. But I'd like to do it possibly in the spring, maybe in June. Give me all winter to plan. And hopefully, the Durham Energy Committee will go in with us. And I'm talking to someone who puts one on every year in Massachusetts, North Borough, Massachusetts. It's called the Solar Jazz Festival. He's been doing it for about six years. And he involves the schools, he has the school jazz band play and different activities for kids. And so, you know, I'll be able to organize it a lot better over time.
Lou, is the entire committee gonna help you with this? And how many now are on the entire committee?
There are three of us, so I'm hoping that this will attract a few more people. Yeah, and hopefully Durham will come in with us too. Okay? And I wasn't real successful at finding musicians either, especially free ones. Well, the ones that said they would play for free were busy that day. So, that's why I need the time.
Okay, questions?
I like the idea, so you're gonna have a sign-up sheet for people that are interested in joining the committee when they're?
Yes, oh, absolutely, yes.
I love the way he swung and changed his, changed his.
And I was gonna ask, are there still gonna be booths at the fair? It's mainly gonna be the dinner and the fireworks, right? So, that's what I got from the Lee Town Crier.
Dinner, ice cream, bingo, and fireworks. But the VFW is gonna be some raffle tickets, I think.
And the Boy Scouts.
They're still gonna do the fundraiser.
And the Boy Scouts.
And the Boy Scouts.
Yeah, we haven't heard back from the Boy Scouts yet.
Oh, really?
Yeah, we haven't heard back from them. And the bingo is still an unknown because it's still going through the red tape. Mary's dogs are, I guess, even though the board gave it its blessing, there's still a lot of hoops they have to jump through. So, they're working on it, they want it to happen.
So, Rodden, originally you were gonna do the energy fair on the 25th?
Yes.
But the note, or this description that you just gave, the board says the 20th, which I think is a Monday?
Oh, I thought, oh, is it a Monday? Oh, okay, then I mean the 19th.
Okay. So, you mean Sunday, the 19th?
Oh, yeah. That, I'm also wondering if people think that an evening event would be better. I don't know, this is just, you know, I'm willing to.
Open to ideas?
Open to suggestions.
Okay, so the date is to be determined?
Yes.
Okay.
And the only other thing I thought of is just to make sure that the building is free that day, because people can reserve it, so.
Absolutely, yes, yeah.
Okay, keep us up to date, and you know, if anything changes, so we know the final, the final version, huh?
Sure, yeah, thank you.
Okay. So, we'll move on to select person, Casper. Discuss current method and which references are handled, discuss mask mandate.
Oh, okay. As far as references, one thing that has been concerning me in town is we don't have a strong ruling on, you know, if you give out references as a person who works for the town, for people that live in, you know, live in the town or business in town, we don't have a rule about that. And a lot of places that I've talked to in the past, either you have one list and it has everybody's names on it, and then the person can go and that's fine, or you have, you know, there's a lot of resources I know on Facebook and other places where you can get references or referrals. I think it puts us at risk when we give references for our business because it both makes the resident feel that, you know, oh, if I use this person, then that's gonna help me with planning and zoning or maybe in another area. And then if we say this person's great and it doesn't, it doesn't work out great for them or whatever, then that makes them frustrated. So, I just think it would be the responsible thing for us to do to have a rule around giving out names of employees.
I'm a little lost.
Sorry. I didn't say that.
It's not unique.
Yeah, well, so when somebody comes to the town and they need to know, I need someone to paint my house, if somebody says, oh, I know this guy, he's great, and they work for the town, then that feels both like the town is supporting that person and also other people that do painting in town might feel frustrated that their name's not there. And then it develops a relationship where now you have to, oh, you have to get in with the town to get more business, or it's just a weird thing. Most towns don't allow you to give out.
What do you recommend?
I think we can choose between either saying just.
Do we just have a policy saying, hey, we don't recommend, you know, construction workers, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera?
We can either tell them about places that they can look for referrals, or if we really want to, we can have a list that has everybody's names on it. It depends on what everyone feels is the better choice. But I just think that we can't sometimes give out some names and not others. I just don't think that that's the right thing as a town to do.
The safest thing to do would be to just not hand out references.
That would be the safest thing to do.
Yeah.
Because then you don't have to update the list all the time.
Right, and then you don't have to, you know, I think that's as far as a town and our own liability and the right thing to do.
Well, and I mean, by putting it on a list, the town may, you're endorsing it. Basically, you're endorsing it. So, if somebody has a bad experience with a carpenter or whatever, he says, hey, you know, this guy's approved by the town and he took my money in rants.
I agree. I agree, and I think it's, it's a, people trying to be kind, and I think that's a great thing. I just think it puts us in a strange position. So, I think not, not giving out recommendations is the best choice.
Okay.
Well, that was what I had told the department head, so they already found that that was the direction the board was going.
So, we'll just make it a policy.
Well, there was never, there was never a policy to hand out the references, so. So, not a policy to not hand out references.
They have, I assume.
We have a little bit in one of our policies that we're not to make recommendations. We don't take keys for persons' homes when we do house checks, things like that. We just keep away from it.
So, if we can maybe put that in the personnel policy manual, so it's written down someplace. And it must be like, we could probably steal from another town that already has it or steal from the police chiefs.
Most teams follow it.
Yeah, I think that's a thing that.
And then maybe we can post it on Facebook or on a webpage, so people know about going forward, so that people that do normally give out references don't, you know, have someone really mad at them.
Energy's a list, there's plenty of places out there where you can find people.
And Oyster River Service Providers has a lot of success and you get a lot of different people's opinions. There's lots of places now, so we don't need to be involved.
Or neighborly, you can go to ask particular questions.
A lot of different choices, great.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, we'll move on to number five, Julie.
We're gonna talk about masks.
Oh, masks, I'm sorry.
It's that back on. It's fast on and off a few times. I only asked that we have a conversation, and I was gonna reach out to the department heads and find out more. I just, as things are changing with different variants, I think it's important that we have some metrics to work around when it comes to when do we ask that, you know, employees are masked or that we are masked indoors. I'm not saying that that needs to happen right now, we have a very small caseload, but it is increasing pretty quickly in Durham. And often, we don't get tested as much as they do, so it's just something to be aware of. And I thought if we talk about it now, when we're calm and there's no crisis, we could say when it gets to this level or when, you know, we have a place where we know, okay, this is when we need to make a change in how we're doing things. So, I thought we weren't talking about it tonight, so I didn't go ahead and get all the opinions of the department heads, but if anyone has any thoughts or if it's something we want to think about, do some research on and come back and talk about it.
It is an important topic. I work at PES and PES just did last Thursday, everybody that's on base, that's inside, inside, has to wear a mask. And then the DOD came out today and you've probably already all seen it. Anybody that's in the military is required to have the COVID shots. So, it's getting heated. So, I agree with you that I think we need to have the conversation and maybe if we can gather some information for the next time, but definitely this particular county is in the red zone, so.
It's happening.
That's not good.
And we have a lot of children, you know, kids under 19 are the hottest, you know, the newest whatever I practice, just as one of the growing populations and so, to help make sure, let's say, if I think it's important, we think about.
Well, I think, I don't know, you kind of get the feeling the way the winds are blowing, we're not be wearing masks here, you know, all over.
Right, so I guess it was just a point that we talked about.
I mean, it certainly appears that way. I don't know where the other towns are, I think UNH is going to mask, if I remember right.
Indoor masking.
Indoor masking.
And the local school district is having that conversation now. I don't think any of them are deciding that.
Yes, the School of Public School District requires masks for everyone from K through 12 until soon further time. And I think my original thought was, you know, do we ask for vaccinations? I think that's a little challenging as we're, as in South America, you have the Lambda variant and we're not sure if that's even gonna be, if the vaccine is gonna be effective against it. So, I think we just have a lot of science to pay attention to, and I think we need to really think about what are gonna be the metrics. So, we're not waiting for two weeks, you know, we have a meeting and then things go on and then we have to wait for this selectment meeting. I think it'd be nice if in the next two weeks, we kind of think about what our plan is, have it in place, and then, oh, we're at this level, masking indoors, just have a, what do you call it?
I think that's, right now, we're just gonna see which way the winds blow and make a decision.
Yeah, does anyone at Altany have?
Do any of the chiefs have any additional information that you?
Ideas or?
We just, we went to the CDC and that's where we get our guidance from right now.
Perfect. So, the state of New Hampshire adopted legislation that would prohibit us from requiring that anyone wanting to come into a home and build and be vaccinated.
Right.
There is some debate because of the language of the statute, whether you can or cannot mandate that your employees be vaccinated. Some people read it one way, some people read it another way.
Yeah, I think we'd have to have some good facts before we ask for something like that, to be sure.
Look, what about masks? Because there was this whole big thing about, you know, Durham did the mask thing, you have to wear a mask. So, has it been conclusive that the legislature has given us the ability to do that? Some people said that Durham didn't have the privilege or the.
Well, people were saying that all along. I mean, it was easier for us when the governor had the mask mandate. I don't think he's gonna do that again.
Nope.
I don't know where, excuse me. I don't know where the legislature stands right now, to be honest. But I do think we're headed in that direction again.
People always have the choice to wear it, even if it's not required.
Right.
If people are concerned, they can wear theirs.
Yeah, where it gets tricky is if you're inside and someone's been in the air, but it's just complicated, so. I know, I'm seeing a lot more masks in the past week than I have last summer, so.
And, I mean, you wouldn't have to wait two weeks for a meeting. You can always call an emergency meeting, because quite frankly, we had an emergency meeting back in March of 2020 that pretty much shone us down, so.
So, I guess that's maybe just a heads up that that's something that we need to be aware, that might be possible. And for that, I'll look to know that that's something we're keeping a monitor.
Okay, so we'll just go with the status quo until we hear something that says, well, we better get a meeting going. Okay. Moving on. Motion to accept the consent agenda. No, I'm sorry, I missed a few here, didn't I?
Yeah.
Okay. New assess values, I think that should be.
That's where we are, yeah.
So, as you should all know, because you all should have received the letter at your home, the preliminary values have been established by the revow by the CCAG, the company that we contracted with to do the work. Today was the first of three days of taxpayer hearings for people who have questions. It was a busy day today. Between today and tomorrow, there were, there are 53 scheduled hearings. I think there were some drop-ins as well, and then I'm not sure of the numbers for Saturday. You know, the meetings were conducted in the town offices, there was no yelling.
Right.
There didn't seem to be any arguing, but, but the numbers are shocking. So, the average is 56, almost 56%, I think it's 55.8%. There are some values that are 147% high. The manufactured homes went up.
Dramatically.
Some of them went up by the 147%.
The manufactured home?
Manufactured homes, of which Lee has a fairly large number. We also have a total right now of 54 taxpayers that get the elderly exemption, 40 of which do not pay any taxes because the value of the home exceeds, or rather, the, the, I want to say discount, sorry.
Exemption.
Exceeds the value of the property, I mean, it is, that is essentially what it is, the reduced value. So, you may want to think about upping the amounts of the elderly exemptions come March. People may report a petition warrant article if there's enough of them that want to do that. But, but you're gonna see a lot of people who are now paying taxes when they have not been paying any taxes in the elderly population. I don't know what this is gonna mean for the tax rate. I did some very, very preliminary calculated numbers and I don't even want to say what I came up with. I mean, what everyone needs to remember is that there was an almost 8% increase in the budget, which is more of a driver than the assessed values. And I don't know where the school is at with their budget. Was this year the really bad year in terms of the middle school?
Yeah.
So, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a difficult year relative to the tax rate, so.
Do you have a total valuation?
The total new valuation?
Not the total, the total, because it's usually like 450 million.
Yeah, it's usually 450, well, a figure of it went up 56%. So, it's 700-something.
Oh, all right.
Right? Yeah.
Well, the important thing is for people to make sure that their house is evaluated the same as everybody else's.
Right.
So, if everybody goes up the same amount, nothing changes, but it's the.
Right, and, and I mean, we all keep saying that this can't continue with property values, but I know a house on one street over from me, just a three-bedroom, two-bath, house on a, truly a postage stamp-sized lot, because it's near Hampton Beach, 700, just sold for $710,000.
Well, they're living next to you, so that's second cost.
I can tell you, I do not have a house that is, even now, that is worth 700, so it's still, it's still crazy.
The house is next door to me, the assessment value was much lower than they were managed to sell it for just, you know, the past month. So, unfortunately, I think that those numbers are, in a lot of cases, are, you know, really accurate.
Yeah, so I don't know if anybody has any more questions. There's, the data is on the website.
But the people need to understand that you're not gonna be paying that amount more under taxes. It's not, it's not, okay, I paid this much and now, you know, my house is worth 50% more, so my taxes are 50% more. It will not work that way, but they will possibly be higher. They will possibly be higher.
Yes.
Well, not for every single person, but sadly for any.
Well, I did the process and I asked for my, copying my assessment card, so everybody should do that just to make sure that they've got everything correct in there, so that's the.
Who do you ask?
There's an email, you can email them. I emailed them on a Friday evening and on Saturday morning I had it, so they were working.
Wow, that's amazing.
But yeah, it's just important just to make sure that, you know, your dimensions are right and stuff like that. So, but yeah.
And if somebody doesn't come forward in the next week, is, what are the options, Sam?
Well, ultimately, if they don't agree, they can ask for a hearing, I think it's either the BTLA or Superior Court. So, there's this process after this if they truly, I mean, even if they meet with CCAG and still don't agree.
Right.
There's still a process, there is a process, yeah, great, yeah.
I don't, I don't foresee them getting any real great information back when they ask the question of how did, how did it come out, you know, with this number, you know, what?
Well, they'll explain to them the process, but the thing is, when they're in there, they can also check in terms of the, the CCAG people, check out their assessment card, just to make sure that, you know, everything's correct, so.
Sometimes assumptions are made about the quality and then the condition the house is in as well. And maybe that house hasn't been kept up well and it's actually a much lower value than you realize looking from the outside, so they can.
And if it's never been inside, a full basement is different than a crawl space.
Yeah.
So, if they can't get inside and they, oh, well, must be a basement and it's a crawl space, that's a little bit too. So, it's just those kind of things that people can just check on, so.
Okay.
You may recall during two separate meetings, one, there was a meeting where the board approved the expense of $1,200, so that we can livestream the meeting, these meetings on YouTube. And then a subsequent meeting, the board approved $2,500 to buy a new projector. That $2,500 was kind of an off-the-cuff, you know? So, when back they had an opportunity to look into it further, the total cost between the equipment to livestream and the new projector would be $4,220.77. And the other two dollar amounts combined was $3,700, so it's $520.
Simon, can you explain to me what exactly they're proposing? Because they want to install something on the side? I wasn't too sure what exactly they were suggesting.
Installing something on the side.
On the side of, by the podium or something to?
I think that's for the livestream switcher, because there has to be a way for whomever is gonna be running that to start and stop the meetings.
So, they'll still have projector?
Right, the projector, yes, there will still be a projector.
And then there'll be some piece of equipment over there someplace?
It's either over there or it's gonna end up in there. I think Steve had preferred that, Steve Gaggen had preferred that it be in there.
It seemed one of the changes was that you could actually have the projector be the thing that the people saw on the livestream. Did I get that right?
I think.
So, that instead of having to read behind us and we're feeling like, you're gonna, you know, they can't read it, remember it's far away, you could actually have the screen be what the person's talking about in the projector, which was more like Zoom, which I think everyone enjoyed that you could read the actual.
So, that requires somebody at the switcher to switch between those two.
Yes, the projector goes to the livestream.
Right.
Right.
Okay.
I think that's an important technology.
Then we'll need somebody to do that.
I don't think that's.
We need a switch man.
Or woman.
Or person.
Well, that's man, main man, you know.
And, okay, all right.
Let's not have that debate right now. So, so I guess what I'm, I guess what I'm asking is whether the board wants to spend the increased $520 and get everything even more upgraded.
It's still a lot less than the television channel that was 30,000, right, or 10,000 or whatever, yeah.
Yeah.
Seems like the right thing to do. We need to have a.
Everybody seems to be nodding.
We're saying yes.
Yeah, you did vote, you spent your money.
Yeah, we can spend money, so.
Thank you.
Do you want to do a?
The parish house.
Do you, do you want to do official votes?
Nah, we'll be all right.
All right. Okay.
She's leaving.
Are you saying now we'll be all right at the parish house?
No, 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 no. So, the parish house, so.
I think we're talking about a tablet.
John.
John, 187 Steppenstone Road. Does the board know what they're buying, what specifications of the projector?
Yeah, she gave us the information on the sheets, it was in the.
It was in the agenda.
Yeah, the agenda.
No, there was no specification for the projector that I saw.
I will review that right here.
There was a cost, a line item, $849, and a cost for other items, but there's no specification of it, just is a projector. So.
When we discussed the projector originally, we talked about the 4K, and I didn't realize that we were.
Right, that's what we asked, that is what we asked for.
So, I'm looking to see what we have in there.
They go past the 40 pages of.
I know, they get to this.
That's, just my question is, is there a specification for what it is that's being provided?
That was the request we had.
$849.
We're looking.
Yeah. How much information on the?
I can't read that, so.
Sorry. USB, the desktop computer. Did he give it to us previously when we were getting the information?
I know that we talked about and requested a 4K, I think it was a 4K projector.
Yeah, so I'm fine with asking for specifics about the information. I, you know, I don't, for me personally, I, as long as it's 4K, but if you want more, you know, specifics about the projector.
Can we just confirm that it is a 4K?
I just, that's a really low price.
Yes, it is, that's why.
But that is what you had originally requested, yes?
Right, that's why I wasn't concerned, but yes, it took into it.
4K is more than 800 and something dollars.
Right, so you're, you wanna spend the money provided it's a 4K projector?
Yes. Yeah, I guess we'll just guess what the prices are, he can give us specifics.
Can you text Steven just?
That's a good idea, bring it up later.
Is he still taking your texts, or is he? She's the one with the TA, I'm not taking her texts. He's usually pretty good about responding, so.
All right.
The parish house.
Parish house. So I did not speak with the woman that called, Denise DeVal did, but a woman contacted Denise, I think a couple of times, um, interested in renting the parish house for the purpose of moving her family in. I gathered the husband works at the shipyard, and they're having trouble finding an apartment, I don't know how she knew it was empty, I don't know how she knew anything about it, but that was the question. The reason that I'm bringing it to the board is that Denise, neither Denise nor I really have the authority to say no to somebody who wants to rent the parish house, but it's not habitable, is my understanding.
Okay, I was gonna say, is it habitable?
It's also not in a location where she can live in it right now, so it'd have to be moved, and then become habitable, so.
There's, there's no water.
Right, right, so what, can I assume that the select board is in agreement that?
Right now, but.
The answer is no, no thank you, no thank you, thank you for contest, that's been a thank you.
There, there is no way.
There are houses for rent around that have come up recently, maybe, for a better look.
So Stratford Regional Planning Commission, as you may remember, we are no longer members of the Stratford Regional Planning Commission, um, they sent an email around, it was a couple of weeks ago, um, they are going to be assisting towns with digitizing records.
Which is excellent, something that was on our goals.
Or free, is my understanding, but in order to avail ourselves of this service, we would have to be a dues-paying member.
Which would be about a little over $5,000 on this service?
I think it's probably around, it's probably closer to 6,000 than to 5,000, but yeah, 5,000 something. A few years ago, we had looked into digitizing records, and having a company do it, and even to just do the assessing records, it was gonna be $30,000.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, so too, we've already been discussing possibly getting this anyway, so I, it makes no sense to pass up something as soon as it.
So, yeah, so the question is whether the board wants to become a member of the Stratford Regional Planning Commission again, so that we can, you can take advantage of this help with digitizing.
Well, let me ask a question, they're gonna come in and they're gonna digitize all our records?
I honestly don't know what the particulars are, I don't know if they know what the particulars are, it's in the very early stages of the project.
The email that Denise had sent, it was about.
And is there a requirement to stay enrolled for a certain period of time, or?
I would say at least until the project is completed, I, I believe that they've had a lot of interest in this.
I'm sure.
So, I don't know how long it would actually be before the work got done.
Two plus, where are they gonna store them, how would, how was the process for retrieving them? There's usually a system associated, scanning's only part of it.
Right, the naming system is almost the most important part of it, because if you don't have that, then you can't retrieve the records once you've digitized them.
The, the point of them, them doing this, though, is to make it so that we can all have records that are easy to maintain and manage, so I'm, we should definitely find out, but I'm hopeful that that's the plan, to make them usable, which is something we already had, as something we needed to do as a town, and it's an expensive project, and to have help with it sounds wonderful.
I think the other thing you need to consider, because this was an issue the last time we were looking into digitizing, is whether all of the parties involved are going to allow the paper to be destroyed. So if there are groups in town that convince the board not to.
Well, maybe we could talk, I know in the past, it was in Straddle Society was interested, and maybe we could talk to them about, you know, which are the things you wanna go through and look through, have those there, and then they can destroy them after, or figure ways to throw them, so. I just think there's a lot of other areas that we could work with that can be, does that make sense?
John.
John Tappin, 187 Steppenstone Road. After records are digitized, they don't necessarily have to be destroyed.
Right.
The cost savings comes from, you no longer have to have those records in an expensive place that's, looks nice, that's well-lit, that meets ADA, and so forth.
Right.
They can be in a much cheaper place, so you can save a lot of money even without destroying the records.
Right, good point. The question is where to store all the stuff, once we, if we don't need to, so figure out which ones to store.
Still, still need to figure out where you're gonna put all our records.
Well, you know, if, there's only people that are five foot, what, six or shorter above the highway department, so.
We've got another ocean container.
Yes, I have, they used to have meetings up there.
Yeah, we're not getting any more ocean containers, I'm tripping to buy any more things.
So do you wanna ponder this? Do you wanna make a decision now?
I'm ready to make a decision, I don't know.
I'm interested, but I wanna know what happens afterwards, cause scanning's only part of it, so, you know.
Does it, if, if they scan it, and what happened afterwards, if they did that huge, that chunk, and then that saved us all that money?
Well, it's not gonna save you all that money, because the 30,000 or the 20,000 or whatever it was includes the stuff, you know, they're gonna, you're gonna retrieve it from.
But you're still gonna get your $5,000 back more, more than.
I'm interested to pursue it, but I'm not committed.
You want more information?
Yes, so.
I just don't wanna take so long that we're in the end of the list.
Well, I think we'll be in the end of the list anyways, I'm gonna take the Duke boys first.
Well, let's just see how much more info we can get on this, Seymour.
Sounds good.
I need more information to make an informed decision, how about that?
All right. The last thing is just to say thank you to the board, thank you to my fellow coworkers, thank you to the citizens of the Lee for allowing me to serve you for nearly the last 10 years, um, and, you know, I have my cell phone, so. If you have any questions that you think I can still answer, don't hesitate, so, thank you.
My only concern is that Denise has your cell phone.
Denise has my cell phone, because she used it quite a bit while I was on vacation last year.
Great, great, so another topic, we should just go sometime, vacation rules. Thank you for the incredible work you've done in the town, I know it's only been a Slidewarm number for a short period of time, but I really appreciate how much you've helped me with, and how much you, how much your patience has been challenged by me, and yet you still have it, so thank you.
Thanks.
And what is your last day?
Uh, August 16th.
August 16th?
August 16th. That's it?
Okay.
Let's, how about a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented?
Okay.
Let's see, can I get a second, you gave me a second.
Second quiet.
Right, roll call vote, Selectman Bugby?
Yes.
Select person, Casper?
Yes.
Select person, Casper?
Yes.
Selectman Brown, yes, there we go. In that case.
What, do you wanna sign these now, or later?
I'll sign them.
I'm sorry.
Do you wanna sign these now?
There you are.
Thank you, please, sir.
Make a motion to enter in the non-public session per New Hampshire RSA 91 hyphen A colon 3, Roman numeral 2, per rem, lowercase A, X, 3.
No, you can forget about the S3.
Okay, I can forget about that? Roll call vote, required, oh my goodness, Selectman Bugby, seconded, thank you, roll call vote, Selectman Bugby?
Yes.
Select person, Casper?
Select person.
Yes.
Selectman Brown, yes, motion passes.
The new projector is.
Oh, I move to seal the minutes from the non-public session.
Second that motion.
I seconded.
No, she already did.
Have you already seconded it?
I did.
Yes.
Okay, roll call vote. Selectman Bugby?
Yes.
Select person, Casper?
Yes.
Selectman Brown, yes, there we go.
We're cleaning up. So now, are we gonna motion to?
Motion to adjourn.
Second that motion, to adjourn the meeting?
What?
He's first to adjourn, to adjourn the meeting, I'm seconding to adjourn.
Oh, he adjourned the meeting?
Well, no, he's motioning.
Yes.
You're gonna adjourn it, with the roll call. Should be roll call?
Meeting adjourned.
Yes, he can just do it.
Oh, good, all right, good.